Okay, so we have two sets of minutes to approve. We've got September 25th, 2017.
Okay.
So people had a chance to review.
But per my notes and my recollection, I think these are pretty tight and pretty accurate. So I would move to approve both the September and October minutes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Any citizen comments for items not on the agenda? All right, we've got our planners, and I thought I saw she must have gone to the restroom.
Yeah, okay, so we can come back.
And Mr. Goodfellow did reach out to me, and he will not be able to make this evening's meeting.
Okay, that was kind of a surprise meeting. So let's see.
I think that.
I guess we should just wait. We have such a short meeting. She didn't know how quickly we were going to get to her. There we go. You are up.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
This agenda is running quickly.
Yeah, I don't really have any updates. I told you all last week that the portions of the bike path plan, Carroll County Bike Path Plan, go to the Planning Commission next week, on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, so.
And we also recommended to Frederick County, you know, that they basically, you know, ditto.
Do what Carroll County does.
Yeah, what we had proposed to you guys and coordinated with you, because that's, you know, we're unique in that we share, you know, both counties and so forth, but you had delineated, you know, what we had proposed as our bike path and so forth, that we wanted that to be in the Frederick County Plan, too.
Yeah, and that's what we sent to them as well, so.
Okay, I think the other thing that, because you're new, we'll go ahead and share this with you. About two years ago, we realized that it was in the best interest of Mount Airy, as well as this sector of both Carroll and Frederick County, that we started to engage in a regional planning dialogue, okay, that was a win-win between the counties that share in Mount Airy, you know, and the municipality itself. And we got overwhelmed with finishing up our master plan update, and everybody was dealing with their priorities as well. So we really didn't get that dialogue underway, but there was an agreement that that made sense, because we have a unique situation. So we probably are going to revisit that, okay, with the support of both counties in that regard.
Okay. Just to worry. All right, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. All righty, so we, I think the next thing is discussion of, so a few of us went to the Maryland Planning Commission, Maryland County Commissioners Association meeting. Yes, there, it's right there. Roxanne, Bill, and I all went, and so we're going to recap a little bit of what happened at the conference.
And I think the preface to this is that when you agree to be on the Maryland Planning Commission, or you are on staff, you're a member of planning staff, you're automatically a member of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. And that's like the professional association in support of all of us, okay? The advantage in trying to attend and connect with other attendees at that annual meeting is that you get to trade, you know, the reality of what it's like doing this planning role in each of our counties and municipalities. And it varies greatly between eastern shore and central Maryland, and our more populated counties and western Maryland. So that's a wake-up call.
But we're all governed by the same rules.
Yeah, and so it's interesting how all this plays out. The actual sessions that we get to attend are very instructive. They're very, very insightful, and that's what we tried to capture in notes and summary that we've distributed to the members of the commission. But it's a great, great opportunity in terms to connect with other folks, and you get to hear some, you know, some possibilities in terms of improving the efficiency or effectiveness of how we do this role in our municipality.
So, since we don't, since we're missing a few planning commissioners, I don't know if we want to do this tonight, or.
Yeah, I think we give out the copies to everybody, and maybe we revisit a discussion and change.
That might be good.
Although, I mean, unless, the three of us who attended, if there were, you know, kind of significant takeaways that we each had that you wanted to share with one another or with the group?
I mean, I think, for me, a lot of it's, in a way, it's basic, but yet, you know, you dig a little deeper on some things. But the basic part is, there's even a session on doing the master plan and the comprehensive plan, and it's really kind of a reminder that this plan, the master plan, really governs everything that we do, and everything that we do has to be consistent, like per state law, with the master plan. And one of the things, Heather, one of the things I thought was interesting that they do in Gaithersburg, so as you all know, here in our, in the staff notes, the staff refers back to the code, the section of the code, whatever is governing, you know, whatever we're talking about, which is great. But in Gaithersburg, they actually also reference the master plan section, and I think it's kind of a cool thing. It just ties it all back in, and it's a reminder that this is really our guiding document for planning in this town. So I just thought, it's very basic, but there's like a, sort of a subliminal significance or something to it. And for me, I also, and it's very kind of complicated, but the presentation on the sign ordinance was, I thought, really helpful, because it was a reminder that Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona is not the end of the world for small towns, and it was very, well, it's complicated, but there were three concurring opinions written in the case. So you have Justice Thomas, who writes this opinion, and it's, if you're not familiar with it, it was a sign, it was a church that was a portable church, so they would move, they'd have a different, they'd have, their services at different locations every Sunday, so they'd have to move their signs. And the town had kind of an absurd ordinance where only directional signs, you could only have four, but other signs weren't really limited. So it was, it was, but what Justice Thomas did, who wrote the majority opinion, is he, instead of just saying, there's no rational relationship between this ordinance and the purpose, he did the whole strict scrutiny and compelling interest, and he basically took something that was so obviously unconstitutional, and he made it, I don't know, he just made it much more significant than it really is. So two justices concurred with him, but other justices wrote their own decisions, and they all agreed on the ultimate judgment, you know, which is, this gets struck down. But the point that is, I can't really relate here without making it too complicated, but is that there are a lot of ways to ensure that, you know, we can have a sign ordinance, and we can still have a fair amount of control over the signs, and there are definitely ways to do that in a way that is consistent with the First Amendment and does not violate it. So, and maybe we'll have a work session on that for anyone who's interested in before we actually, one day, pass the sign ordinance.
What were significant takeaways for you?
Well, I think the first one that Leslie said, the takeaway that the master plan is like, as the planner, the professional planner said, it's a living document, you just don't put it, you know, sit it up on the shelf, and then look at it in the year or five years, or, you know, whenever you go to review it, that it is a living document, and that it needs to be, it should be referenced. Also, that you're supposed to have a yearly review and a five-year review?
I thought it was two years.
Maybe it was two.
I think it's two years.
Anyway, and most of the municipalities are not in compliance with doing that, which was kind of interesting. And along with the sign ordinance, which was very helpful for me, but the things that they, the basic things that the sign regs needed to have was a severability clause and a substitution clause, and also in citing our regulations, we should have a purpose, what's important, the purpose of the sign ordinance. And I thought, you know, that kind of brought to light a little bit, a little bit, it helped a little bit more, trying to waddle through all the sign ordinances, and they said, don't worry about the content, just worry about the number of signs, which was, I think, very important.
There were, there were like at least four or five key sessions that the three of us attended. The first was actually presented by Frank Johnson, former mayor of Mount Airy. So that was, that was really, really interesting. I mean, he looked out and saw us and said, you know, I feel like I'm, you know, I'm in company here. And we actually had, I guess, two or three of the presenting teams, you know, had attorneys, so that had to do with the style. What Frank shared with us was the particulars of the Maryland Open Meetings Act, and that basically said, if you are a municipal group, a commission, a board, and you do public meetings, then there are criteria that you need to utilize. And first and foremost, you need to have at least one member of your group, your commission or your board, that gets trained, and that's certified in this training, okay? So that was a key piece of.
Yearly.
Understanding.
Certified yearly.
Yep, yep. And then that person becomes the go-to resource in terms of what we're responsible for, okay? And in terms of the advertising of our meetings and the agenda, and, you know, how they are conducted, and how they're reported. If your meeting is cablecast or televised, if it's recorded, then that takes some of the burden off of the minutes. You can do a fairly simple, basic minute summary, because you have another source that you can go to. And I believe that the period of time, it's seven years for tax returns, I think it's five years for meeting minutes and/or, you know, actual, a digital recording, a video recording of it. There's also recommendations of how the meeting is conducted, of how it's structured, where you have public comment and so forth for most efficiency, and how you publish all this in advance and so forth. So we got training in that, and the main thing was that we wanted to bring back the understanding that we want to share with our fellow commissions and boards. You know, there are requirements that we all need to be aware of, and we need to get trained on. We got five or more handouts in Frank's session. I've got copies of those with me now, but because we need to reprise this in probably our January meeting, then we'll also be sharing with the other commissions the website that you can go onto and do the training online, okay? So that was the first training piece. Second piece was on the sign ordinances, and the interesting thing there was you had a combination of presenters, both staff and citizen planners from some of the municipalities, and then there was a representative, an attorney, from the Outdoor Advertising Association in Maryland, who was very, very much a part of, you know, let's get on the same page, let's find common ground, let's understand how this goes forward. I think that some of the main things there was that the way we have made signage decisions in the past, that's not the way we need to be doing it going forward. It can't be content-based. It's got to be based on other criteria, and that's in part because of this ongoing dynamic point of view.
It's not really new. It's not really new. I mean, time, place, and manner, time, place, and manner is how you can regulate the First Amendment. It's always been that way, and there's, you know, it just gets interpreted, you know, in different ways at different times, but that's basically, you know. I mean, what we have right now is in DC, a trial that started today, where they actually arrested journalists who were videotaping protests. So that's a little bit of a First Amendment issue.
The next session that was insightful was on the comprehensive plan, and thanks to the vigilance of our Mount Airy staff, we're pretty much up to speed on that in the way that we've utilized our comprehensive plan process, and the fact that the way we updated that and we shared it with the council, and the way we invited participation from other commissions, I think that helped us produce a much stronger plan. We're currently in our fifth iteration of a Mount Airy master plan. The previous four were done and put on the shelf. The opportunity with this one is to make it a living document, and what we heard in the way Pat Hayden led that discussion and presentation was that really, that's where it makes the difference. And when we heard from Gaithersburg and some other commissions to say they cite their comprehensive plan as well as their town code, you know, in their actual meetings, that helps to do that, okay? We also heard some very interesting recommendations and insights from some of the municipalities, including Middletown, okay, and the way that they approach their planning commission meetings. They actually tee up a work session many months out of the year, where they meet with all of the planning commission members, and they review what the agenda is going to be, and who the presenters are going to be, and if there are going to be site plans or concept plans, and what are the planning issues, you know, that are coming into play. And so everyone gets on the same page, and it's just, it's really very, very productive and very efficient. So we wanted to bring that back and at least talk about it and consider it as a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I didn't talk to the planner from Middletown, but the one thing that I would be concerned about a little bit is, it sounded to me like all the developers would come in.
Yes.
With their site plans, everything ahead of time. And it's not like the public couldn't come, but it's really, to me, in a sense, it focuses more on the developer again, rather than the citizens and the residents.
I mean, they definitely will be, there are some times where we say, where there's something that we might want them to redo, or we know immediately that they want them to redo, and that by them having that four or five days in between, they can redo that and then come before, then when they come before the public, if there's other things, great, but if there's not, then they don't have to wait another month and another month.
Right, right, because it's more, almost like a technical.
Exactly, and I think that's where we get bogged down, and where some people get frustrated with our process, that it would help. So they have the workshop the Wednesday before each of the planning and zoning meetings, and workshops are open to the public, so, you know, the public can be there and put their input in there, too, as well.
The, I think the larger context here is the prevailing master plan, and the vision and the objectives of where that wants to go and why that makes sense. So that's the essential context. Just like we've said, we think it's appropriate to maybe set off to the side temporarily, further development and finalization of our mixed-use ordinance, because the downtown master plan opportunity, that whole project, the insight that will be gained from that will be so instructive in terms of the priorities that we have downtown, and even for Center Street development, that it makes sense to do that first. That's the kind of lead that I think is the essential context. The third presentation was actually a summary of findings from an outreach project that Maryland Planning Commissioners Association conducted. They reached out to all of the jurisdictions, and they said, we want to hear back from you. What's the role that you want to see MPCA doing in support of the reality of what you're facing locally? And what we basically heard there was that we want you to be a resource. We want to understand who else has some of the same issues and challenges that we have, who has experience in that regard, so we're not reinventing the wheel, and we can connect with them. And we want there to be a resource either through MPCA or Maryland Department of Planning, or, as we heard, recommended from some of the jurisdictions, Maryland Municipal League is really a great resource, even for the planning function. So those are all possibilities. Lastly, there was, and this was someone who used to be in Mount Airy, Chris Jakubian, did a presentation on annexations. And so Roxanne and I, Leslie, did you attend that? Okay, all three of us did. And it was very in-depth, and because we, you know, whether it's Harrison, LaShir, or in the future, it may be others. That was useful to hear kind of all of that detail in terms of guidance and suggestions and recommendations, and how to set up and do an annexation as appropriately as possible.
Well, I thought that what was really interesting about the annexation presentation, anyway, it comes back to the whole master plan. It's all about, really, it's all about the planning, but is that you actually are really using your annexation as a tool to assist the town in creating the town, the way they actually want the town to be. And it's almost, instead of sort of being this reactive type thing, it's, and also all the, that the town has incredible leverage in dealing with the annexation. So it's just kind of a reminder that we have, we have some, you know, ability to control things. But what I thought was really interesting about, I think it was in that session, is that, is that here we have a problem, or we seem to have a problem with development encroaching from the county, like the county may be wanting to develop, as opposed to us wanting to annex and then develop, whereas all these, the presentation was presented as though the towns, like, actually want to annex and then develop, and the counties don't want the development. So it was really interesting. It was like the flip side of what we have here.
Yep.
And also that counties, like, and this is something, I don't know, maybe I interpreted it wrong, but that the county, that the town can just, if the town wants to annex, they can annex, and the county can't do anything about it. But there is a, but there is a five-year rule.
I thought that, yeah.
Yeah, so if, so if we want a piece of land, we take it, and the county's like, oh, no, we want to keep a conservation, and of course, we wanted it to be development. The county could say, no, not for five years.
It's exactly the opposite.
It's the opposite of that, but it's very, very interesting.
And that's, that's what's going on right now, and the need for regional dialogue for us, especially with Frederick County, more so than with Carroll. Yeah. The second opportunity wasn't MPCA at all. The mayor provided an opportunity that I think he became aware of with MML, a gentleman, an attorney by the name of Jay Gulo, who does briefings and seminars for municipalities in terms of managing meeting effectiveness, okay, for public meetings, for municipal meetings, and how to run them in a way that is more efficient and more effective. And Leslie, you and I and Patty attended that, and that was really, and you were there, I'm sorry, you were there, you were on the other side of the table.
He thought I was there.
That's right. And that was really, really insightful. We need to get another copy of his handouts, because some of them weren't totally clear, but I thought that was really, really productive.
I do, too.
Yeah.
You know, touched on open meetings and that kind of stuff, and structuring your meetings so that the public gets to speak, okay, on every issue that you're talking about, but it's not a way that stops the meeting.
Yeah.
You know, it's a way, an avenue for the public to speak.
I think the bottom line in all of this is the fact that as a citizen planner, as someone, and as a volunteer, we still need to be educated and understand the process. And I think you can see that your commission is being proactive about that, in the fact that when we have the opportunities to have training, we are going to take the training and bring it back to our fellow members if they were not able to attend, or there weren't, there wasn't enough room for them to attend, or whatever. But the fact that, you know, you just don't say, oh, I don't want that, or that doesn't look good anymore. You have to know, you have to know planning, and in order to do that, you have to have the education. Yes, we have the staff, and we do rely on the staff, but we also have to know what the staff is talking about.
There was a requirement at one time, I'm not sure it still exists, that you had to take an MML course about planning, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, within, like, the first six months.
Yep, yep.
There is an online course, and then there's opportunities throughout the year for free conferences.
Yeah, and Leslie had done the online, and then you actually attended.
A while back.
There in Easton.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did the basics again.
Because I had mine.
Yeah.
Yep.
They did it on MML the first day, you know, nothing's going on till like 5:00 other than picking up your, picking up your name badge and all that kind of stuff. And they highlight one meeting every year that's, you know, noon till 3:00. And I mean, they're long and in-depth, and the one I took for planning was eye-opening. You know, it's difficult to come up here and know the difference between a site plan and a master plan, and, you know, all the plans and all that kind of stuff, and it's, it's three hours of stuff that you're going back and reading it later on. Did you do that, Larry? Did you take one?
I have not. I look forward to it.
Yeah. I think the bottom line in all this is, what, you know, whether you're elected in your own council, or you're mayor, or you volunteer, and you're on a commission, if you're not leaning forward, if you're not taking advantage of developmental opportunities, then we're missing an opportunity to engage and to further, you know, the possibilities, you know, for the local community. So we're interested in identifying these developmental opportunities, sharing them with each other and with other commissions, because at the end of the day, this is our hometown, okay? So we want to do the best job we can, and we want to be as aware as we can be and make the best decisions we can.
So I'm sure we'll be talking more about this in January, but if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to come up to the podium.
And if any of you are interested in any of the handouts and so forth, you know, they're available for you as well, absolutely.
From a staff perspective, I do, I am glad that that conference was attended by three of our members. It's important to hear the interest and for you to convey the interest. I will be starting on the budget for the commission in December, or for my particular line items. So I am going to, and this is for your ears as well, Councilman King, I'm going to put monies in for every commission member to attend, and I will hold on to that even when the, because budgets do get reduced, but I will be able to express that there is interest for these educational opportunities. So it helps me when there is that interest. So thank you.
And Heather, you know, thanks to your budgeting expertise, we were able to attend. So we appreciate that.
Okay, so we have unfinished business, the downtown master plan, but I think that we're skipping that.
Well, just to note. Well, just to note that you guys have had just about a month to review the proposals that Monica Wireback gave to you. And we would be looking for written individual comments to be forwarded to staff individually. So, and if you could get those in, I would say by the end of like November 30th would be great.
So, any commission member who's out there watching or?
We can send an email as well.
Individual comments by November 30th to Monica Wireback. Thank you very much.
Should we?
And everyone here as well.
Can we send it to you, Monica and Barney?
You, you absolutely can. The most important person in that is Monica.
Absolutely.
And I think you're just supposed to send it directly to staff and not to other commissioners.
Yeah, definitely.
That's what they decided.
But I would encourage audience members and people watching at home, I believe there is a link, is there not, for the RFP on the, on the town website?
Yeah, the RFP, I think.
Okay. I would encourage you to take a look at that RFP for the downtown master plan, to see how comprehensive that is and the benefit that we will gain from this project. Okay? Take a look at the scope of work that's laid out there. All right? And then it's, there was a lot of interest nationwide in this project and in being a part of this project for, in Mount Airy, Maryland. You've got some top-tier folks who submitted proposals. So this is really, really a great opportunity for us.
And for those that don't understand all the acronyms, RFP is a request for proposal.
There you go, there you go.
You're looking at what we're asking these people to provide us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, super.
Moving on to Councilman King, please, on report.
Okay. Several things that are happening here. The volunteer dinner is November the 30th, 6:00 PM at the Carnival Grounds, the new, the new activities building at the Carnival Grounds. We are supposed to RSVP.
By today.
Call in by tomorrow.
By tomorrow.
We have the 21st. So if you're going to go, please.
Are you, are you available?
Please RSVP and get this message out to your commissions. It's important that everybody know, we've been, we've been beating this thing and beating this thing and we're not getting a whole lot.
She sent another email today, so hopefully people.
So it's supposed to be RSVP to C. Riley, R-E-I-L-L-Y. That's C. Riley at MountAiryMaryland.org. Mount Airy spelled out, M-D dot org. Okay? December the 6th, 4:30 to 6:30, EDC and the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce have a business, a business card exchange in this, in this room right here. It is absolutely the finest event that the EDC puts on. The town staff goes out of their way to contact businesses. We have food provided by local restaurants and it's a really nice event. And I think the chamber uses it most of the time to try to raise a little money for their scholarship program.
Councilman King, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just one little note, it'll be actually next door at the.
That's right. I'm sorry. The location's been changed.
Is it the Hive?
It's next door at the Hive. There was a, there was a.
That's right.
Conflict that we weren't aware of.
A little bit more room over there.
Thanks, Heather.
Okay. And that, to my EDC report, EDC, MAMZA, and the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce are working together to try to figure out what the exact mission of each group is and where these missions overlap, you know, how we can deal with budget items to help out in the downtown with MAMZA and in the rest of Mount Airy with the chamber. So the chamber, the new chamber president, and I don't remember his name, help me out here, Bill.
He's a financial advisor for Beryl Lynch and Frederick, but Jeremy something.
Yeah, Jim.
Jeremy.
Yeah, I think, my apologies, I don't have his name with me, but he's coming to all of our EDC meetings. He's actually, you know, been, been, running to him in all other kinds of places, you know, with, so they're, they're really trying hard to try to outline what everybody's job is and then we'll, we'll see what we can do about providing EDC for the town of Mount Airy. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. And we're already ready to schedule our next meeting, which I believe is going to be January, Heather, is that right? Or are we going to have a December meeting?
Typically, unless we have pressing business items that are ready to come before the planning commission, we don't hold December meetings. So.
So, so when, when is the next council meeting? When is their December?
December the 4th, is it, Larry? Yeah. Monday, December the 4th is the next council meeting.
Okay. Then what I would urge planning commission members to do is to relay your recommendations, your feedback on the downtown master plan semifinalist to Barney and to Monica and Heather, you know, by then, so we can do that.
By November 30th.
By November 30th.
Yeah, that's our deadline.
Yeah, that handoff so that we have at least, you know, done that.
Right.
And we're not holding up, you know, the council from making decisions.
Yes, that's right. November 30th. Okay.
So January 29th would be the next scheduled planning commission meeting.
Okay. Wow, that's far.
That's the problem.
Yeah. It is a long way. It is a long way. It's a long way. All right. Zoning Administrator Report we have right here. Anybody, any comments?
So does the planning commission have to vote on the recommend, or make a recommendation to the council for the downtown master planner?
That's a good question.
No.
No, we give our feedback to staff.
We're doing it as individuals, not as a commission.
Okay.
I thank Tom.
That's why we're not, that's why we're not discussing it. It's been.
Staff has a responsibility. We were enabled to at least take a look at the semifinalist and give our input, but ultimately we are giving that to Monica.
So do.
Might you want to talk to Tom about that before you decide on your next meeting? Because if.
We already have.
We are.
We already have.
We did.
Tom's in agreement with that.
With what, without?
Without, without a vote from the planning commission.
Apparently, yes. Apparently, yes. He is the one that recommended that we do it this way.
That's why we're not public is discussing it tonight.
But I have a question as far as the, does the public have access to those plans at all? Is that?
That would, probably through a Public Information Act.
Okay. So they'd have to, okay.
Right.
Just curious.
Good, could be.
All right. So that's it then, because downtown master plan, we've already sort of just talked about it. All right. Anything further? Anyone? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Lenny's going to be sorry she missed the shortest meeting on record.
There you go.